Well, good evening. We'll call to order the City Commission meeting for November 7th. First thing on our agenda is invocation from Sam McVay. Not seeing Sam in the audience. Chase, would you?
Yeah, I'll go.
Thank you.
Joe, pray a prayer. Lord, Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this opportunity to come together to serve our community. We pray your blessings on our city and these young people that are with us here tonight in City Hall. Lord, we also pray for your blessings on our country and as we enter what will be a divisive day and probably week to come in our country, that you can heal hearts and bring people together, that we can serve you in the way that you would like. And so, again, we just pray for your blessings and your guidance on this meeting tonight, and we just lift this up in your Son Jesus' holy name.
Next item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. We have with us to lead that tonight Judy Slaton's third grade class from Lincoln. Do you want to come up and ... There you go. Line up and face the audience. Here you go. Would you tell us your name and what you like about El Dorado?
My name is Madeline and I like the ... The pool at El Dorado.
My name is Madeline and I like the ... We'll be yelling.
My name is Lane and I like the baseball field.
There you go.
My name is Addison and I like McDonald's.
All right, let's turn around and would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Slaton, the third grade class. Enjoy having those guys come in and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Next thing on our agenda is personal appearance. We have with us Mr. Lester Estelle, President of the Kansas AWWA, to talk to us about the -- or water.
Well, good evening. I'm very glad to be down here. I got here a little earlier this afternoon and got a treat. Not only do I get the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about the best tasting water in the state of Kansas for your city, but I also got a chance to tour your facilities. And thank you for your hospitality, Kirk, so much for taking us through. I represent the AWWA Kansas Section Chair of that water utility throughout the state of Kansas, and I'm excited to be here today to present to you the award of the best tasting water in the state of Kansas. This contest was held this year in Topeka, Kansas, in conjunction with the Kansas AWWA Eighth Annual Joint Conference. This is a wastewater conference and a water conference. Nine water utilities participated in the tasting contest. I'd like to just take a moment and tell you a little bit how that process actually works. Someone from the participating utility, they must be there to represent the utility. One sample is brought in a one-liter container, preferably a glass container. No markings shall be on the container, and the container shall be marked at the conference with an identifying number known only to the Kansas Section Manager. Samples were served at room temperature. All of the entries must have ... Those utilities that are entering into the contest, they have to have no state or federal drinking water violations, MCL, monitoring, record-keeping, et cetera, during the previous year. And then, previous years' winners are not eligible to enter this year. The panel of judges that consisted of the Kansas Section, AWEA, and AWWA members. We had Penny Young from WEF, Mitch Keddenberg from AWWA. These are folks from the main offices there. Dustin Coles from KWEA. Jerry Blaine, he's the past Chair and Director of the Kansas AWWA. And then Mike Orf, our present Director of the Kansas Section. Now, the actual contest is blind tasting with all of the samples numbered so that the judges do not know who submitted what samples. And the samples are judged on a seven-point scale from best, one to far from ideal. Scores were tabulated and the winner announced immediately following the judges. And only the winning sample was announced. And they look at the ... They smell. They notice any particular taste to that. And your utility, the City of El Dorado Water System, won that particular contest. And with that, the City of El Dorado Water is eligible to submit a sample and to compete for the best tasting water at the national conference that's going to be in Philadelphia in June of 2017. We'd like to recognize, Kirk, if you would come and accept this. And it simply says, "Best tasting tap water, winner, City of El Dorado, Kansas, American Water Works Association, Kansas Section."
All right. Thank you. And I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the guys that are really responsible for the best tasting water in Kansas. And first, Brett Perry, our Superintendent. Brett's been with us for about 15 years, I think, so come on up. Our newest operator, Grant Smith. He's the rookie. He's learning the ropes. Sitting right next to him is our most experienced, our Chief Operator, Robert Simmons. Robert's been with us for 43 years, and Robert actually received the Operator's Meritoria Service Award a couple of years ago from AWWA. And then we have Neil Boyce. And then, not with us tonight, but also responsible for Great Tasting Water is Derek Kling, and he's on vacation right now, so I guess we get a picture.
Scoot in. Scoot in. There you go. There they smile. Yeah.
Well, wonderful. Congratulations to Kirk Department, you guys. Thanks for your efforts. Much appreciated. And a great honor and an opportunity to be at the national level. Where? It is in Philadelphia in June of next year?
Yeah.
That's right?
We will take it.
I'm assuming we'll participate?
Yes.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Next on our agenda is personal appearances. Excuse me, public comment. Let me just get those back. Anybody in the audience wish to address the commission? Everybody left. Being done, we'll move on to consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes and consent agenda that was in your packet submitted last week. Any comments associated with consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next thing on our agenda would be zoning ordinance amendments. This is to amend our current zoning ordinance. There's a handful of things in there for Article 1, Article 4, and Article 6 as it relates to our zoning regulations. Is there some staff who should speak to that specifically?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. The Planning Commission took up this issue on April 28, 2016, and voted seven to zero to amend these regulations. And in two portions of our zoning regulations, this has to do with our extraterritorial jurisdictional area that we have with the county. It was changing some language to better reflect that in our eyes. And then, another portion of this is dealing with fences and front yards. Our current regulation only allows a fence up to three-foot tall that has an opacity of at least 50 percent. We hear from a lot of citizens that they would like to have the ability to put up a four-foot fence. That's what's pretty standard when you can buy fencing material. So, the Planning Commission considered that and recommends to allow that change. And then, there was just one more clerical error that had to do with transitional buffer areas, and it was just referring to a certain schedule within our zoning regulations to refer to that for all issues regarding transitional buffer requirements. And that's all I have. Any questions?
You talked about the language for the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Fitz, our interpretation was any discussion with the county, we mesh with their interpretation as well?
We have our inter-local agreement, which is separate. This was just clarifying some language in our zoning regulations.
Okay.
What's ordinance number going to be?
Any questions or comments on the zoning amendment changes?
Mr. Green?
None, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendments that a ordinance number G-1228 be approved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Mayor Haines.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor Haines.
I don't have that on my ... Oh, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong spot on my page, then I guess. I'm sorry. All right.
Mayor Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badde?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's skip to the next item. Okay, move on. Next we have is our proposed salary schedule. Everybody got a chance to review this. This is a salary schedule we've met and talked about in work session some months ago as well. And it has some amendments associated with the new labor laws.
Correct. This is something we do annually going into December as we're preparing for budgets. This salary schedule would be reflected in the 2018 budget, not the 2017, which is already set. This did have some changes to classifications based on exempt, non-exempt employees. You see on there the addition of the Assistant City Manager, which was discussed in the last budget. And also, there is some adjustments due to salary surveys that were done with other area local governments. So, there's some adjustments to some salaries from the current effective salary schedule.
Tabitha sent out also. Did you send it to everybody or not last year so that we can make some comparisons?
I only sent it to you. I apologize.
It's okay. Okay.
I thought it was you.
Okay. This will be used to build the 18 budget.
Correct.
All right. Any further questions or comments on the six schedule as presented?
Senator, please.
2831.
Ready? Yeah. I would entertain a motion.
I move that Resolution Number 2831, a resolution establishing 2018 salaries and wages paid to various employees of the City of El Dorado, and to allocate the various funds of said city, charges and debits for the payment of compensation of wages of all city officials and employees be adopted.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comments? Any further questions? None? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is new business. Chance for anybody to bring new business to the commission, also advisory report, so I guess.
I want to start.
All right. Thank you.
Parks and Rec met last week. The soccer got to play on the EMS turf fields, and the kids just loved it. It's awesome. Volleyball and football program's going well. The YMCA partnership for soccer has gone well. They've hit some bumps, but they've been able to work it out and are looking at doing more for next year. Disc golf, there should be a design soon, if not already.
I saw a concept today, so we have a draft design right now.
Awesome. Awesome. Airport, we're looking for Advisory Board members. We need one more to be able to make a quorum. So, if anybody out there in TV land wants to serve on the Airport Advisory Committee, give the city a call. The CVB this weekend is the National Junior College Cross Country Meet at Prairie Trails. There will be 72 colleges with 740 athletes. So, if you see a lot of extra people in town, that's probably what they're doing. Quite eager to see how that goes. But again, that's, I believe, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
The Prairie Trails will be closed the afternoon of Thursday, November 10, starting at noon, for them to prep for the course. And then, Friday, all day will be practices for the team. The meet itself kicks off at ... Registration starts at nine. Races begin at 10:45 and awards at 1:30.
CVB also needs some members on their Advisory Board.
They would need one, too.
How many?
I think we have ...
Tap, need two?
Applications in right now, and we need a third one.
Need a third one. So, we need one more. Does this one have to be related to the hotel?
Our other two have believed meet that criteria, but we'll know for sure based on your conversation this week.
Okay. So, basically, anybody in the community that's interested in convention and Visitors Bureau, give the city a call. Trick-or-treat down the ... Oh, library. Library also needs one move, right?
Definitely.
So, if you're interested in serving on the Library Advisory Board, again, call the city. Opportunity for the community to get involved in what's going on.
Have they changed their time to meet yet?
Not yet.
I can't answer that.
They have not. They're hoping they can meet quorum this month, and I believe they're going to talk about it, but if they can't meet quorum ...
And trick-or-treat down the street was fun. The weather was awesome. The candy was great. I even got some. And it was really nice seeing the kids dressed up and all the people that we got to talk to. I think it flowed really well going from downtown all the way to Gordy Park. There didn't ... I mean, it was constant movement. There wasn't a whole lot of standing and waiting in line, but definitely the weather helped on that one. And then, one more thing, unless you're living in a third universe somewhere and don't know, tomorrow's election day. Everybody needs to get out and vote. Just a bad way.
Okay. Yeah.
Prairie Trails Advisory hasn't had a meeting since our last meeting. Still awful excited about Cubs winning the World Series. Went out and celebrated with my father at Walnut Valley Cemetery. I'd like to also echo what Kendra said about get out and vote. And there's been a lot of early voting, but don't get discouraged by it. If there's a line, just stay there and stick with it. Something else? I had something else, and I just went blank.
Cookie fair?
Oh, oh, oh. Thank you. December, I hope this is right, the fifth, first Saturday in December is the St. Nicholas Cookie Fair at Trinity Episcopal Church. Starts at, I think, eight. What? What am I doing?
You looked at me and I ...
Well, you're acting like, okay, say this. It's a best cookie deal in town. It's, they're five bucks a pound, everything's homemade, and if you can't find a cookie you like there, then you just don't like cookies. I mean, they're just all there is to it. Come early. Get there ahead of the hoarders because they do count, so.
Did you give a time?
I said it starts at eight till they run out of cookies, I think, which usually is right around noontime.
Hey, El Dorado, Lincoln, we're still doing a membership drive update, and we're pushing for that. We talked about the 2015 modern housing that's going up. It's at Star and Second. It's a good project. Everybody should drive by and take a look at that. We talked about the Community Development Block RAN application and the 2016 modern home application and the 2017 Hope Six. And the Connect and Caffeinate this month was going to be Steve Funk. He's going to be the speaker. It's on November 20. And was it at noon?
Four.
Four. Be at four o'clock. And that's all. And solid waste didn't meet, so don't do nothing for that.
Okay. I didn't have much, other than Youth Commission is meeting regularly, and they have some projects they're kind of trying to dwindle down to get decided for the new year. They'll take a little bit of a break in December, as they always do, but we're here every Monday night. And then, the only other thing I was going to say was recognize, Community Member Bob Lane was awarded the Jerry Newman Award of Excellence from Ronald McDonald House Charities this past weekend, which is a pretty significant award for all of his work with the community and the youth in El Dorado and in the surrounding areas as well. And so, a big thank you and congratulations to him and his family on that. That's all I have.
And this is a ... That's a big deal.
It's a very big deal.
And it's a worldwide competition?
Yeah. It, I believe, he's in company of maybe around or under 30 people. A lot of Hollywood names and some government politicians, and I mean, it's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, it is a great honor.
Yeah.
Congratulations to Bob.
So, that's all I have.
Okay. I would add, library, yes, they're seeking an additional library board member, and we are working on rescheduling meetings. The four o'clock on the Mondays have been a challenge for many, so continue to find a good meeting date for that. I will, Main Street, start there. They're working on their 2017 work plan and have a meeting coming up soon. REEP, I will share that I was a part of a panel to talk about our experience in Nashville with the City of the City. Reports back and the debriefing, if you will, of that keeps on going. And again, glad to be a part of that discussion from over here in El Dorado. And I would also share that there's been some comment, I think, and I would like to get out that that trip, no cost to the City of El Dorado. That was all provided by myself and REEP. So, it's a great experience. Other new business to bring to the commission? Okay. Being done, we'll move to City Manager's Report.
It's Mayor. The city offices are closed this Friday and observance of Veterans Day. Trash will still be collected on its normal schedule, so your Friday trash collection, you will still be served on Friday. Kendra mentioned the cross-country meet. You'll begin seeing cones and signage going up along Country Club Road probably tomorrow in preparation for that. We will have buses parked on the east side of Country Club Road from Country Club Lane on south to as far south as the T Box or Hole Number. What hole would that be? Just to the south of the True North Edition.
It's seven.
Seven, yeah.
Oh, eight. I'm sorry. Be eight.
Have a work session scheduled for the 16th. Would like to discuss Prairie Trail rates at that work session, as well as the ...
The Advisory Boards?
Correct.
And then, the mayor had mentioned the budget schedule, but Tammy is actually presenting on that at the meeting on the 21st, so we're going to ask if you still wanted to discuss that on the 16th.
Anything we need to be aware of ahead of the 21st presentation necessarily? Okay. And if that's not necessary, then on the work session, we're going to be talking about it on the 21st.
Scott, we had another, the water work session. That was the other thing.
Yeah, that will, if we have time in December, we can discuss that in December, water rates, looking at water and sewer base rates.
Do we? We have one Wednesday.
Next one's Thursday.
Okay.
And that's ...
Yeah, that's a week from Wednesday. Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Everybody's gearing up for cross-country? Golf courses, Jasons are ...
They are preparing. Yes, they are getting stakes and ropes in place to get ready to barricade off all of the greens. Been working with Butler and coordination on staging and awards platforms and stuff.
Running smoothly? Okay. Any questions on City Manager's Report? Everybody has gotten a pretty nice convocation from the Fire Department on the year. Well-done report, I guess we'll be, he'll be here to present some of that soon, too.
I believe he presents in the early ...
Yeah. Moving on, the next thing on our agenda is executive session, where we would talk about legal matters and non-elected personnel. This is, start with, it's probably going to be more than a half-hour discussion.
We were thinking 45 minutes.
Okay. Forty-five minutes would be, would be 7:20, right? Am I looking at that right? No, 7:00. No, seven o'clock now, seven forty-five. Sorry. Haven't read a dial. I'm guessing it's seven o'clock. So, seven forty-five.
I move to recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and matters pertaining to non-elected personnel and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the City Commission Room at seven forty-five PM.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We will recess to executive session until seven forty-five.